I know city council work session. We have all members present with the exception of council member Lawton and council member Davidson. Council member Lawton is in Disneyland celebrating his birthday and he's asked that we excuse his absence. Council member Davidson is stated she's gonna run, be running a little late, I still can't get online. She's at cheer practice and they're getting some girls ready for homecoming. Shh, 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 lies connection cancelled.
I tried to see if you'd let me connect to me.
What's that?
See if you'd let me connect to guest instead of...
That's what I was trying to connect to.
Oh, we'll try it another.
Oh, thank you. Okay, city. City of Tenino guest Kramer. Xfinity, Xfinity Joe's Cars Hidden Network. Am I trying to set up the City of Tenino wireless wifi? Not City of Tenino guest.
Yes. Good wireless wifi.
Connected, here we go. Hey, good job everyone.
We just need to have the print version and then have all four.
Alright, how's everyone doing tonight? Our work session, we have before us letters to legislators read Thurston County Airport proposal. We discussed this at the last meeting. It was brought up if we wanted to petition our legislators as a county. And what the taste this body had for forming an opinion based on the proposed regional airport. We have a letter that was drafted up with the leadership of Board of County Commissioners Chair Carolina Mejia. And I have signed onto that letter. I'll find out Friday who else has signed, but I'll read it into the record. Dear Thurston County legislators, and this goes out to District Two legislators, District 20, 22nd, 35th. On August 2nd, 2022, the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners sent the attached letter to the State Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission. This is the third formal correspondence the Board of County Commissioners has sent on this topic to the CACC, which demonstrates consistent opposition to any proposed airport expansion site being located in Thurston County since 2020. As demonstrated in this letter, all local jurisdictions stand together in opposition to this proposal. On September 23rd, we learned that the central Thurston County moved, that central Thurston County moved forward for consideration as one of the three potential sites for a new two runway airport. The Board of County Commissioners, in addition to all local jurisdictions in Thurston County, are now asking for your help in opposing any potential airport projects in Thurston County. Please help us maintain the quality of life and character of Thurston County. Our county has a delicate balance between development and fragile prairie habitats that are home to endangered species. Thurston County has also experienced rapidly dwindling agricultural lands. The prospects of an airport expansion will exponentially increase the loss of agricultural lands and put at risk the balance our residents have worked hard to maintain with our natural environment. We appreciate your support in this very important issue. If you have further questions, please reach out to County Mayor Manager Ramiro Chavez at 360-754-2960 or ramiro, R-A-M-I-R-O dot Chavez, C-H-A-V-E-Z, at co.thurston.wa.us. So there, the, the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission has stated that they will take into heavy consideration any local leadership's concerns. And if there is not support, they said they will not support it where they're proposing. I have signed onto the letter, I don't know as far as, and I know that the Board of County Commissioners have signed onto it, I can't speak to any other mayors or any other cities. But this is out there, it is circulating and I, it's my hope that every jurisdiction signs onto it and it sends a strong message to the coordinating commission and to all our legislators. There any thoughts or questions?
To me, like I was saying, this is a very simple letter. I've lived here for what?
You want to turn that on please?
Okay. I've lived here for almost four decades now and there's been several attempts to just expand the airport that we have and every time it's come up, the public has said no. This is not something that, the only thing that I disagree with in this letter is the quote, the line about leadership. This is not the leadership. This is the people of this county saying no. They have not changed their, their opinion on this. It's an easy letter for me to say yes, sign it.
Thank you. Any, any other thoughts, concerns? I encourage everyone to contact their legislators individually and provide your thoughts. This will come from the mayor's office and, and I consider it you guys as well. And this will go to all our legislators. So I'll pass this around if anybody would like to see it. Next is discussion on our fee schedule. So, where am I seeing, okay. It is included in your packets. This is something we review every year and we can review it throughout the year. So as we're developing our budget, we have to review our fees and have discussions about what appropriate fees are. We are, this is a work in progress, so some things we're coming forward with recommendations. We're not asking for any type of adoption tonight, I just want, you know, I want to make sure that there's plenty of opportunities for you all to touch on it and see it and provide input to staff and the administration. So we'll just, we'll go down to the fee schedule and we'll start at the top. We adopt this by resolution every year. Animal licenses, you know, they exist. It's really not, it's not something, it's something that's loosely enforced. We do issue animal licenses every year and we do have a fee for that. We just simply want to make sure that we're covering our costs because every year we have to order the tags. So, you know, we'll make sure that that's, you know, we just have to check that they, you know, what they cost. We spend about a hundred dollars a year buying tags, maybe they've gone up to a hundred and two dollars. Ball fields, we don't have a recommendation on that. That's something that, you know, Jessica would review and that Troy would review. And if they've got any recommendations for changes with us, then we would incorporate those when, in there. Same with the concession stands rental. Council chamber rentals, we may want to review that. We have kind of upped the, you know, the ambiance in here, it's a little nicer. It's not something we typically rent out much. So, you know, we just, you know, making sure we cover our fees and making sure that if somebody's in here and they make a mess, that when we have our public works crew come in and clean it, we at minimum cover our costs for somebody that's in here for a couple hours cleaning things. But again, council, I don't, I don't want to spend any time on that because it, it has not been something that has really ever been rented. Photocopy costs, those are just kind of standard fees. The parking thing's a little weird because we've never enforced or sold parking permits. That was a program that was put in there by some previous staff and it never really went anywhere. Same with parking fees.
Did any...
Park fees, go ahead.
Did, parking, did anyone go by the parking lot, their city parking lot tonight at all?
No.
I did. And it is packed. And it's packed most, almost every single night. I mean, clear out to central, all along that whole row and the one, yeah, it's packed.
It is, it's great. The, the parking, that parking stall fees is talking about like the five slips right across the street there. And it was worried, making sure that there was parking for staff and it hasn't been an issue. Park fees, that's something that Troy and Jessica want to take a look at in the fee schedule and come to us with recommendations. Parade and special event fees, you know, I got that rattling around in Troy's brain, you know, he made the comment, well, you guys waive them anyways, so why does it even matter? Quarry house rental fees. We have some recommendations in here, looking at what some of the other places around rent out for, primarily the Grange. I got some of their fees and we want to make sure that we're, we're not, you know, overcharging or too, too much undercharging. But we are going to have a much nicer facility, a much more useful facility. So, you know, the recommendations that we're making, and this has not been updated for probably four years, is that even if we were to up the quarry house rental fees slightly, we'd still be absolutely under anyone else. We also don't want to undercut private businesses that rent out things as well, but the city's not trying to rake in a bunch of money. So, you see the recommendations that are before you. This is something for you to look at, think about, take home. Quarry pool fees, you know, we need to revisit those. Our costs have gone up and we're making improvements, but we don't want to raise prices very much. There's still some things that Troy needs to review, he's got a big job. Septage receiving, speaking with Public Works Director Cannon. What's all that beeping going on over there?
Sorry, I was trying to make the heater work.
Oh, you cold?
Yes.
Uh, septage receiving, he's told me that we will begin the septage receiving operation again within two weeks. They should be up and running. We have, we have hired a temporary operator in training, so we had an operator in training that we had hired, a younger guy, didn't work out, he wasn't, you know, he didn't take to it very well. We had, we, we, he resigned from the position. We internally posted the opportunity to all our staff. And we had a temporary seasonal employee that applied and he was offered the position temporarily. So, the position was posted to all our staff. We did have somebody that is in-house that applied for the hot, position in-house and Troy offered it to him through the end of the year to give him an opportunity to see if he really likes that job. So we, and it's been going well, it's been going for a couple weeks. Mr. Cole Plaja applied to it and he's been working out at the septage receiving, the wastewater treatment plant as a wastewater treatment plant operator in training. You've got to be in that OIT position for, I want to say like a year, you've got to put in so many hours to be eligible to test for a level one position to actually run the plant. You have to be a level three operator, so it takes time. We contract out with Ruben, who's our level three operator and he works there part-time. We really like the way things are going right now. So that, big part of that OIT's position is managing the septage receiving operation. So we've got that employee online, we're going to be in the next two weeks rebooting the septage receiving operation, having removed all that sludge. We're in a position now to do that. We've been charging fourteen cents per gallon. Our recommendation is we continue doing that into the first of the year when we would up it to fourteen ninety per gallon. So, think on that. All our community development planning and building fees, something that Renee, Rainey and Shane need to review. And then, the rest is for Dan Penrose. So those are the recommendations we've got so far. I want you guys to, you know, take those home with you, think about them, think if there's any other things that you noticed that were missing. And the homework is lined out there for staff. Are there any thoughts about the fee schedule or questions or concerns?
Am I reading it right for the, where is it, there it is. Septic receiving is fourteen cents per gallon, we're going to fourteen dollars and ninety six?
No, 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 no. Four...
Because that's what it says here.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was, we, okay, we wanted, yeah, it would be point one four nine.
Okay.
Yes, not fourteen ninety, my bad, thank you.
Is that wrong, maybe that's...
Yeah. Big hike, big hike.
We thought that was huge increases.
Yeah, we're not Lemay.
Yeah, no, yeah. No, 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 you made a good point. Any other thoughts? Okay. Next item in the work session topic is County Commissioners redistricting map. So if you dig into your pile in front of you, you'll see the most current proposed map for the new districts. This is something that I and Linda, or Councilmember Godovac, we've been attending the redistricting committee meetings. And there's been a lot of interest from the south counties, the south county cities, primarily Bukota, Tenino, Rainier and the Roch, greater Rochester area, to ensure that we all get a district that represents us where we, we feel like we've got a, a home. The, the initial maps were, I think we've talked about this before, where you, you saw lines that were going up and down on the map, north, south. So we would have still been in the same district as, you know, some of the Olympia, you know, kind of municipal areas.
I think ours would have been almost cut in half.
Yeah, yeah, we would have been in the same district as most, much of downtown Olympia. We feel that, you know, the kind of the character and nature of our communities is different enough to warrant our own district. So we banded together with the other southwest county communities and said that we are like communities and we'd like to be in the same district. And this is the most up-to-date map that they're working with currently. It, I, I feel it's a, it's, it's, it's a vast improvement from the previous maps and I like it where it's at. I'm, I haven't heard any feedback about any additional changes. It seems that the other communities are happy with this. And I wanted to make sure you guys are aware of the discussion that's going on. And if you had any feedback for me or Linda as we attend these meetings, or if there's any, anything that you guys on your own wanted to do. John, you're the senior elected official here and all your infinite wisdom and knowledge and time spent thinking about these things, do you have any, any guidance or...
I'm just looking at the, the size of our district, it is massive, but the population base is, it's equal to everything else and that's what we went off of, the population, if I'm correct. This, I would also imagine that these same lines are going to be for the port as well.
Correct.
Okay. Not a problem, we've got a lot of room for expansion in our area. Excuse me?
Well, the, the actual, people wise, I guess, is that's pretty, it's, it's pretty even with all five districts, isn't it? One, two, three, four.
Yeah, population wise, and the land is different, but land doesn't vote.
No, no.
It's the population, it has to be by law, it's got to be that, that, the population's got to be as close to each other as possible.
Right, right.
Uh, as I said, ours is a giant landmass. And I'm surprised that Lacey isn't putting up a beef about how much of the other part of South County is dipping into the Lacey district. But if they're not putting up a beef about it, I, I actually like the, the way it looks.
Well, yeah, and, and I think, don't you suppose Lacey understands that Yellam and Lacey or JBLM, the population in that area is mostly JBLM?
Yeah, that was, that was a, that was a comment that I made, that I felt like kind of the east end of the county being grouped together in, in some similar fashion made sense because they are kind of a JBLM focused region. And, you know, we're kind of more of a rural, you know, agricultural type region and that's what we're shooting for. Initially, they, they were more similar sized because they had like us grouped in with, you know, a little bit of urban core and that's what they were trying to do to, to make them similar sized. But then in the, in the discussions with that commission, they, they steered away from that in favor of trying to group like-minded communities.
Look at, look at Tumwater, where it says Tumwater, that's probably not Tumwater proper, but some of the, our district is in that area too.
Like a south Tumwater area.
Yeah.
That would be most of the, some new housing that's in there and the airport.
I was just going to say, it looks to me like it might be the airport. Well, all in all, I think it's great, I really do, I'm, I'm very pleased that we're finally going to have a voice for this end of the county, you know, that's the thing, we haven't had a voice for this end of the county.
Well, we've had a voice, but it's been more of a whisper.
Well, yeah.
What do you think? What do you think?
Did you get on your computer alright? Did she get on, Rachel get on yours?
Alright, that concludes the work session, so we can jump into reports with the last ten minutes of that and get an update from Mr. George Sharpe.
Test, hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council members, I give a report on the items that we have. The first one is the chamber. We are holding a candidates forum next Wednesday, the nineteenth, at six o'clock at the Kodiak Room and we have the confirmed candidates for the Thurston County Commissioners and also the sheriff race. On December, or on November sixteenth, we're going to hold a business social at the Kodiak Room for businesses, everyone, all the businesses in Tenino are invited to attend that and also like to invite the council members to come to that. It's free to attend. And then on December second, we're starting to work on the Christmas celebration and the Christmas tree lighting, have the motorcycle drill team and everything that we do and the singing and the hot chocolate and all that kind of stuff for that. The EDC, they're having a board retreat next week on the nineteenth for a full day. We just hired a new chief operating officer, she's just getting her feet underneath there and we'll talk about that at our study meeting later this month about what her role and responsibilities are. Then I want to get on your calendar on, on December first, we're holding our expo, that's our regional expo, we invite all five counties to come together and talk about what's happening in our district, what's going on and then how economic development forecasts. We again have forecaster coming to talk about what's planned for next year so we can see if we're going to recession or what's being talked about.
Is that at the Great Wolf again?
It'll be at the Great Wolf Lodge, seven thirty AM to three thirty PM. And then our Washington Center for Women in Business and our Lacey Makerspace, which are two programs underneath the EDC, they're putting together a holiday makers market and that will take place on December sixteenth and it's free for makers. So I'm getting the word out to all the makers in Tenino to be aware of that, but just put that on your calendar to Friday, so I invite you to attend that as well. And that's the main thing. Steady will meet next Friday, we're going to have the broadband come and talk, Miss Callie give an update. We have Steve Dunk from Department of Commerce to come and then we're going to have the new COO for the EDC to come and give an update on what she's working on with our programs. That's on the twenty first at eight AM at Mr. Doug's in Yellam. That's my report. Any questions?
Thanks George, any questions for George?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Fardish twelve.
I have no report.
Alright, Linda the librarian, I do not see her museum. I love saying Linda the librarian, it just like brings me joy.
It's the perfect name for a librarian.
Yes.
Um, so Tenino Railroad Day happened, that was a big deal, I could report on, on that under the park thing, but it's kind of what happened at the museum, so, um, the Historical Society was really pleased with it and there is talk of doing it again next year. So it may become an annual thing. We had a lot of the railroad guys who came who want to like pitch in more next year and maybe add a swap meet and all kinds of ideas of putting in temporary track and running, you know, rigs up and down that and all kinds of fun things, so, you know, if there's that level of enthusiasm, I say run with it. We've toyed with maybe doing it some other time of year, is September really the best time, there is competition with sports and whatnot. But when we like really broke it down, it is, there's not a lot else going that's an event. So it, it kind of makes sense to keep it in September, so that's probably what will happen. I now have keys to the caboose. So if anybody ever wants to like go in there and see it and visit, so when we're open as a museum, I can say, do you want to see inside? And kids go, yes! And so I can actually go down there and unlock it and let them inside. I've yet to like, I don't leave it unlocked. I'm very respectful of all of the, the work that went into that, so that's exciting and that's pretty much my report.
Alright.
Thanks Jessica.
Thank you Jessica. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee?
Well, I went by the, um, distillery tonight, looks pretty good.
It looks amazing.
Well, you know, I kind of wish they'd put a little pop of color there somewhere.
I like it.
I know, but it's, it's, it's a little foreboding to me, I'm sorry, it does. And then when they put the, when they close those gates, it looks like, geez, don't, don't come near this place, you know, stay away. And that's not what we're trying to achieve, we're trying to achieve them coming to the businesses.
I would paint my whole house that color.
And I'm still working with Heather at the White Wood Cider, so, that's what we're doing. We need to have a finance committee meeting.
Okay, Planning Commission. I attended the last Planning Commission, they were reviewing the, um, plat, what are the words I'm looking for? The short plat, review for the Ag Park and they... And, uh, they, they did their thing. They held a public hearing. There was some feedback. They will provide a report to the city council shortly. Chief Police is not present tonight. He's been working shifts. Director of Public Works, he attended the last meeting. City Planner, Code Enforcement, he should be here later, so we should get a report from Rainey tonight. We have three minutes for the park report. Do you wanna wait? Or do you got time? Give it your best. Oh, it says nineteen twenty-nine right there. All right. So we shall wait. We're going to, uh, adjourn our work session. We'll begin here shortly.
I knew that. I was gonna grab that thing when I came in and I did.
I'll have another one.
It is freezing.
No, it's not!
Elaine's fine. See, Elaine and I are fine.
You guys got sweatshirts on.
Well, oh, we're prepared.
And it's like blowing hair in my face.
Right on your face.
Right on my face.
The breeze is coming right on us.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of birthday boy Jason Lawton, who is in Disneyland. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you quiet those shoes down, please?
Sounds like a gavel.
Yeah, yeah, it's worse than the gavel. All right, we have an agenda before us needing approval.
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Approval of minutes for the nine twenty-seven twenty twenty-two meeting?
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next is the consent calendar consisting of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two through October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Payroll EFTs in the amount of seventy-one thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Claims checks, number three zero nine one one through three zero nine four six, and EFTs in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-three cents for a grand total of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. There were some large checks in there for some projects that were done. And also, uh, excusal of council member Jason Lawton.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to executive sessions, none. Presentations, none. Public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please do so. Did you include those public comments? Where are those at?
There. If you click on the number seven.
Okay.
It'll take you to them.
Thank you. Again, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now's your time to do so. I was sent some emails that I am going to read in to the public comment. Uh, first email is from Mr. Matt Farrell. I do not know his address. "I'm writing to you to express my opposition to the potential sighting of a major airport in central Thurston County. Thurston County residents enjoy a mostly quiet rural way of life. The airport would destroy that, displacing thousands of families from their homes and farms and shuttering dozens of businesses, churches and schools." An airport? Where did, where did that cursor go? "An airport of this size would have detrimental traffic and pollution impacts for surrounding communities, decreasing their quality of life, devaluing their properties and increasing the crime rate, as airports are a hotspot for drugs and human trafficking. An airport would also have devastating impacts on local wildlife, wetlands, lakes and rivers. I only recently learned of the Commercial Aviation Coordination Commission's work, and I do not believe they have made sufficient attempts to hear from the impacted public or appropriately informed local elected officials. You have a duty to proactively contact and hear from people whose homes and businesses would be destroyed to make way for this commercial project. I wanna be very clear. Thurston County residents do want, do not want or need a new airport here. Respectfully, Matt Farrell." We have another comment that comes in from Thane Bryanton of the Evergreen Valley Lavender Farm. "Dear all, as you can see, many of us in the affected area oppose even the thought of a commercial airport. The price of uprooting people and farms from the affected area is beyond inconceivable. So many of us can't even add to our property due to restrictions regarding pocket gophers. How is it that you can disregard such conditions without a mitigation plan? Additionally, our lavender farm is one of Thurston County, is on Thurston County beautiful, bountiful byway. It's a sixty-mile agritourism route where many venues in the affected area exist. As a former committee member for the byway, we have spent and continue to spend countless hours raising awareness to draw more revenue to Thurston County. Your plan will completely obliterate those effects and create a negative impact on the county, not to mention reduced property values and a lower quality of life for the surrounding communities. I will share this letter on our Facebook page in hopes that our five thousand fans will also express their opposition to such a ridiculous plan. Build the damn thing on the other side of the cascades and build a high-speed rail system. That's much more progressive." Thane Bryanton, Evergreen Valley Lavender Farm. That was... That was dramatic.
I mean, they made some good points.
All right. Um, so we talked about the, the proposed airport expansion site in the work session. I shared with you all the letter that, uh, every elected official has been asked to sign on to that we'll be sending to our elected officials, to our state-elected officials, and to the Aviation, uh, Commission Committee. And, uh, and we've informed you that the Board of County Commissioners has already sent multiple correspondence to that committee. Uh, I encourage everyone that is listening and everyone that is at the dais to also, uh, do correspondence and inform your, uh, your representatives of your displeasure, or if you're in favor of it, you can do that too, but uh, I do not believe any favorable things have been said about this proposal, uh, from amongst this council. We have no public hearings. We have no proclamations. Old business, we have none. New business. Uh, discuss and review spending the twenty twenty-two ARPA funds on playground ground cover. Uh, we have two hundred and forty-six thousand remaining. Uh, we have a proposal before us for, uh, purchasing the playground cover and having it blown in. I believe the cost is approximately twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand? Uh, so it, you know, we are very adamant that we do this playground correctly. Uh, in the past, we have purchased what we call playground chip fall from local, uh, chip manufacturers. That's not the right stuff. We need to get the right stuff. And if you recall, when we removed the old playground up to by Parkside, uh, putting in the chip fall that we have, it took, it took quite a bit of time. We're in there with shovels, we're in there with, uh, wheelbarrows and, and the mini and, and getting it around. What we have, that we have created now is a much larger area, and it's, and we're putting in approximately sixteen inches of wood chips that will compact down to about twelve inches of wood chips. And this is the correct type of wood chips. It's an engineered fiber that goes through, it takes all the rough edges off, and it gets blown in in, instead of shoveled in. So instead of, you know, a month work of, a month of work, this would be done in a day, and it would be done correctly, and we'd be done with it. And if, you know, if you can imagine sixteen inches of wood chips being put over about an acre of space, uh, that, that's quite a bit. So this is a good, this is a good deal. This is a preferred vendor. Uh, we are asking that the council approve the expense of, uh, the ARPA funds on the playground cover.
Move approval.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Surfacing blower installed, does that mean that they bring their blower in, or are we purchasing a blower?
It's all, it's all part of the, it's all part of it. They have to rent a blower.
Okay.
And they come in, and it's like, you know, like they blow in rock, they blow in bark.
Okay, okay.
And, yeah.
All right.
It can be done rain or shine.
Okay.
Which will be nice.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve spending of the twenty twenty-two ARPA funds on the playground cover. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next item of business is La May Garbage Recycles and Yard Waste Rate Increase. Uh, this is a price increase of eight point four percent. I thought you said eight point seven. Yeah, eight point four percent. This isn't something that we really have the ability to negotiate, um...
Sorry, it's eight point nine four percent.
Eight point nine four percent. So we were missing a, we were missing a number there. So we are asking council to review and approve the La May rate increase.
Like you said, we have no choice. It's either approve it or we don't get the service, so move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the rate increase proposed from La May. Uh, is there any discussion?
I don't remember. How long is this, uh, supposed to be good for? How many years?
It's typ, it typically comes back every year.
I thought it said June twenty-three or...
No, it says ending June twenty-two, that it, new...
CPI for one year ending June twenty-two has increased eight point nine for, percent.
But it, the adjustment is, is effective January first, twenty-three.
So it's year to year?
Yeah. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to resolutions. We have none. Ordinances, we have none. We return to reports. Next report is the park specialist.
So lately, I've been kind of in daydreaming mode, planning mode, thinking about what I would like to see happen in the next year for our park department. Um, because I'm looking around for grants, and when you're writing a grant, you're really kinda dreaming about what you'd like to see happen and trying to sell other people on that dream. So, um, that's what I've been doing, grant writing, looking around at other grants, trying to come up with ideas. Um, I'd like to see, uh, day camps next summer, classes for adults and youth. I would love to see, um, also some way to, well, I'd love to see the pool open, so that, that's another dream. I think that one can happen. But, um, I'm also daydreaming about how to register people for these classes, like what would be the most efficient way to do it? And I'm looking at other websites and seeing other towns, and they have websites that link into a parks section where you can sign up for classes. You can, um, sign up for a campsite, you know, all those kinds of things. Um, ways to make it easier perhaps for people at City Hall who are collecting fees if we had some kind of portal. So that's something I'm looking into to find out what that would entail for us to have some kind of landing pad to streamline registrations. So that's been taking up a lot of my time. I also became a certified tourism ambassador.
Nice!
Yay!
Along with Linda. So, uh, things are going well, though. I'm also walking around, doing the same old, same old, walking around the park every week and picking up bags of garbage and, you know, climbing in between the rocks and, you know, I like to do the dirty work too, so. It's not just all sitting at my computer.
Yeah, but you have to stop logging up the ditch, the ditches, find the water, make it to price.
Yes, luckily that was on my off-hours.
Thank you, Jessica. Want to say anybody has any questions? Clerk Treasurer.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, exciting stuff going on. Uh, just took care of submitting a bunch of grants for hopefully some streets. Um, we worked with Gibson Olsen for the TRPC grants. Nearly three million dollars worth of grants, so everybody do a happy dance that we find good things out about those. Um, I know the mayor submitted one also, um, for engineering, um, for some ag park stuff, right? So we're really trying to, you know, get some good streets. So, um, working on reimbursements for the quarry house in City Hall. Those are moving along. City Hall is donezo other than a little retainer that we had to hold back, but, um, everything else is good. We're working on the rate studies still, and you guys will have budget stuff next meeting. 'Tis the season. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, and as far as public works goes, I was gonna give a small update for Troy. Um, Ritter Street, they are plugging along quickly, so that's exciting. And then Sussex, the water line, um, was supposed to begin this week, but they're a little bit behind, so hopefully next week or the week after, but.
Do you recall when they were talking about doing the water shut-offs for the Ritter Street project?
Um, no. Troy was gonna ask them today what that was looking like for them, 'cause we have to give businesses twenty-four hours, and when they turn it off, it will be up to eight hours, they say.
Yes.
Like, the longest amount of time, but, so.
So I was heading up town.
And this would only affect businesses within, like, it would be Jackpot Eagles, Ship Lap.
Yeah, that block.
Landmark, and then the houses behind it, and then all the houses on Sussex from Ritter Street West, and then the houses on Ritter Street that way. So there's like a two and a half, four-block radius
Yeah.
of houses that would not have water for about eight hours.
And they say eight hours, but, I mean, really, they're hopeful to take four or so, but, you know, just to be safe. They make a bigger window.
The sign that's on the corner of Olympias, the work zone ahead.
Mm-hmm.
I thought, gee, they moved that, and I got right up on it, and then I had to swerve around it. The wind had blown it over, so I went down and this guy's going, "No, no, you can't come over here," and I'm going like this to him, and he came over and I says, "Your sign is down," and I almost ran over it. Somebody's gonna... And it would ruin the undercarriage of my car if I had, you know, it's that big metal. So he said he'd go down and fix it, anyway.
Great.
Thank you. So my report basically mirrors Jen's report. Uh, Ritter Street does seem to be going well. Uh, they, to pick up the pace, they've also been, also been working on Saturdays, and they've been working late, a little later than scheduled, so they, they are making good progress. Um, I encourage you to drive by and look, but don't drive on Ritter Street. The, uh, the playground project is, is moving along. Uh, I, I check it sometimes twice a day. They've got several of the, of the toys up. You know, I want, we keep saying two weeks, and we joke that two weeks is, you know, like just a canned answer. But, uh, we expect to be done in about two weeks. But they are, they are there every day. You won't see them there tomorrow or Thursday. Yeah, there's a lot of rocks. We have a lot of very large rocks in our area. Anyone that's ever dug around here knows that. They didn't know that. They know that now. And, uh, the next two days, they're gonna be working on a different job. They said they're anticipating rain. I looked at the forecast. I don't see rain. But I'm like, okay, whatever, guys. They'll be back Friday. Uh, if you go there, you'll see ver, some ver, some larger, uh, steel kind of frames that are up. One of them, they, I think it's called the banana swing. There's this big green, uh, like half-circle that goes into the air, and there's this massive thing called the coconut rope that swings like a pendulum in there. It's just gonna be cool. And they're, they're moving along, moving right along there. I know. Oh, I'm gonna be playing on those things, and so are you, John. Don't lie. So i- i- it's, it's, it's gonna be good. It's moving forward. We're really excited about that. That project will be nice to finish up. Uh, we're starting to plan out the kinda concrete work that's gonna go around to, uh, frame it. Of course, been having budget meetings, been having staff meetings. Of course, been having budget meetings, been having staff meetings. Uh, you know, we, I talked about some of the shifts and some of the planning out of the wastewater treatment plant and, uh, getting the septic receiving operation up on board. We talked about that earlier. I'm looking forward to that because that's, that's a, that's a big job for our city. And, uh, that's, that's about it. Uh, be that is Jason. He is not here. Solid Waste Advisory Board, Ms. Clam.
Mostly that was, the solid waste was talking about the, transfer station at Rochester and the studies that were done and now we made a motion to send it to the county commissioners for the study and the update.
What are they, what are they thinking they're gonna do there?
They're thinking of making that a transfer station.
Making what a?
Of, of the Rochester drop box.
Okay.
Making that whole facility a transfer station because of the amount, the increase in gas, the increase in, time that it's taking the trucks to go to the current location up in Lacey.
But there's no talk about creating another facility?
No.
Okay, good.
No, just making that one a full transfer station instead of a drop box.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause we don't want, we don't want one here.
No, 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 just that. When they've done all these, um, surveys and evaluations and
Okay.
that type of thing already and had good feedback on their surveys.
Awesome. Thank you. Tenino School Board.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that this Friday is the homecoming game and it's also senior night. But, um, leading up to that at six o'clock is the parade and the TSO AFL cheer and football gets to join this time or every time they do, but now that it's happening, um, they're gonna be a part of it. So they get to do cheers during the first half of the game, which is really exciting for them. And I'm sorry, I was a couple of minutes late and my voice is dead. I'm sorry, but, um, we were teaching forty-four girls the fight song. So that was, um, it took me a while. So I'm sorry I lost track of time too, but. And then Saturday is gonna be the homecoming dance. And, um, uh, check the website because there is a lot of little events going on at the other schools as well. TSO I, PTSA has, um, a lot of stuff that they're doing for, um, October. They have, um, harvest parties and stuff that they're planning and, um, so just check their website too because lots of other things happening.
Thank you, Rachel. TRPC.
The only thing that, that I'm gonna talk about on that one is, because most everything else was talking about North County. Uh, but the broadband system and George knows a lot about the broadband system. And I, I brought up a concern. We're spending a lot of tax dollars on issues that really aren't as prevalent as they're being made out to be. For example, Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater are saying, oh, this is a great thing because it's gonna enable, uh, people in, in our areas to get online to see the meetings and stuff like that. Well, if you think about it, they got Comcast, they've got DSL, they've got all kinds of stuff up there already within those jurisdictions. The broadband is actually going to be more helpful for South County and mostly the county part. So we're spending millions and millions of dollars on something that private industry did not want to put the money out because it's so expensive. But it's gonna be turned over to private industry. And I'm not seeing any way of accountability or, or taking a closer look at what's actually going to be happening with all that money. Uh, it's not money that's going to have to be paid back. So it's almost like a grant. Uh, and again, my concern was that this was stuff that Co- Comcast wouldn't do or anybody else would do just because there weren't enough people in the area so that it would pencil out for them to make any money. Uh, is it a good idea to have that? Yeah, I think it is. Is, is the money going to be worth it? That part I don't know because I don't know about any of, uh, the background and how it's going to be, uh, accounted for and that kind of stuff. And I brought that concern up and the room went silent. Uh, but that was, that was, uh, my concern at that meeting. Like, like I said, everything else was all North County stuff. And getting ready to start looking at, uh, the proposals for different road projects.
Yeah, when, when talks, when the, when discussions about broadband internet to serve the city of Tenino comes up, I, I, I don't see there being an issue. We're, we're served wonderfully by the Tenino Telephone Company. And ha- you know, they've been, they have been ahead of the game in providing internet since day one.
Yeah. And, and that was, that was my point, you know, uh, the major cities, Limp, Lacey and Tomwater, uh, Yelm, all of us, we all have a couple of different options. We can either go to Scattered Creek for us or we can do Comcast. Uh, same thing with, with up north. Comcast does a great job up there for everybody. People might not like the cost because of, uh, the increases and stuff and they have to make the adjustments year after year on what they can, what they can afford. But it's still, when you're saying that this is, this is good simply because people that want to see what's happening can now see the Zoom meetings as well. I think that's, that's not exactly a good reason for government funds to be putting something like this in. Uh, it is something, it is a private business. It's always been private business and they've always looked at the bottom line and their bottom line has always said that.
If you're rural, you can, I mean, you can go, you can get Starlink now too, right? Which is better than any, any other type of internet.
Yeah, so, but we're, we're way down the road on this stuff now and, you know, the, the initial knee jerk reaction is, oh, this is great. This is a good idea. But until you start really looking at the accountability of the money itself, at least for me, uh, this is taxpayer dollars. That's something that I'm not going to use because I'm served well here, but I'll be paying for it anyway.
Alright.
Okay, so I brought, like you said, I brought that up and the room went silent.
TPB.
Tomorrow morning, seven o'clock.
And the ledge is not in session yet. Public comment period number, unless you have something.
No, just couldn't tell you three months lacking the phase.
The countdown. Public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, you'll be given three minutes to do so. State your name and address. Moving on, announcements.
I wish everybody would put on their Facebook page, uh, about the candidates forum on the nineteenth at the Kodiak Room. I think it's very important that people come and listen so they, they know who they're voting for and what they're voting for.
Good suggestion. So yeah, George, thank you. It's getting spicy.
Who did? Oh, uh, and Sanford.
Excellent. So maybe we, maybe we'll have a good lively candidate forum, George. Thank you for, for leading that and putting it on. Uh, I know that's not always fun, but it's important. No further announcements. Meeting adjourned.
Non-debatable motion.